Good evening and welcome to the May 2nd, 2018 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. First up is the approval of our minutes from two prior meetings. The first is April 4th, 2018. Is there a motion please for approval of those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of April 4th, 2018. This is written to the record.
Second?
It's moved in second. In all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. And then up next is the minutes from our April 18th, 2018 meeting. Is there a motion please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of April 18th, 2018. This is written to the record.
Second?
It's moved in second. In all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously. Let me read for the record that alternate Commissioner Philip Wessel is joining us on the dais and participating this evening is not all commissioners are present. Thank you, Phil. Make it count, okay? No pressure. This is our consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. One is, the first one is AFP-7891-2018, 130 mission drive for a 750 square foot addition to an existing single-family detached residential home in the R6 medium-density residential zone. That's an amendment to the final site plan. And the second item is AFP-7863-2018, 930 Clapper Road, changes to the parking lot, new landscaping and expansion of an existing exterior mechanical area in the E1 urban employment zone. And that's an amendment to final site plan. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Not? Is there a motion please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as just read into the record.
Second?
It's moved in second. In all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. That then takes us to our site plan agenda, and there is one item tonight on that, and that's for AFP-7864-2018, 700 Quinn's Orchard Road, convert the ground floor of the existing building to a parking facility and renovate the building facade in the MXD mixed-use development zone. This is an amendment to final site plan presented from staff. It's Jasmine Forbes.
Good evening.
Good evening, Jasmine.
So staff, before you present amendment to final site plan application, AFP-7864-2018. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with Section 24-172A, which requires planning commissions to grant amendments to approve final site plans. So the applicant requesting approval to convert the ground floor of the existing building to a parking facility, and the applicant will also renovate the building elevations and some minor site improvements. So the office building is addressed at 700 Quinn's Orchard Road, you can see in the arrow here, and access to the properties on Quinn's Orchard Road, and also through an entrance on another property at Fields, First Field Road. So this application is part of the first phase of a multi-phase process to meet obligations with the new tenant they're trying to get in this building. The applicant will come back with a subsequent schematic development application. That'll be the second phase for this project, and that will include subdivision of the property, a street, and the construction of a parking facility on the south end of the building. The SDP application will be based on the zoning map amendment application, Z-7262-2016, which was approved on July 18th, 2016. The approval included the rezoning of four properties at 700 Quinn's Orchard Road, 14 First Field Road, 1 and 5 Bank Street to the MXD zone, and a new sketch plan. So I will have Phil Hummel from Lenos and Blocker who will introduce the application.
Great. Good evening. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Philip Hummel. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lenos and Blocker. I'm the attorney for the applicant Rockside 700 LLC. With me here tonight is Andy Glick, principal of the Rock Creek Property Group, the owner and applicant, Mike Goodman, VICA civil engineer on the project, and Gary Yuan of DVA Architects. As you'll hear in greater detail from our team, the amendment to the final site plan is for 700 Quinn's Orchard Road, is the first step in a multi-phase process to achieve the desired retenanting of the DRS building, which is currently vacant, bring important economic development to the city with a new corporate headquarters, and advance the mixed use redevelopment approved in the 2016 sketch plan. We want to thank staff for their hard work and their attention to this matter. Applicant has reviewed the staff report and consents to the two conditions of approval, and we respectfully request that the planning commission approve the amendment to the final site plan. And with that, I'll turn it over to Andy Glick.
Great. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Andy Glick, like Phil was mentioning, with Rock Creek Property Group, and we are the owners of 700 Quinn's Orchard. We're very excited to have executed a full building lease with Supernus, a public pharmaceutical company that we're going to bring to the city of Gaithersburg, and they're going to be moving in to house their corporate headquarters. We really believe we assemble a great team of our GC engineer design to change the appearance of 700 Quinn's Orchard. I want to thank the city of Gaithersburg staff for their hard work and support over the past eight months, and coordinate our design and engineering team so we meet Supernus' tight lease milestones that we have agreed to for their lease so they can start their tenant improvements. As you'll see from our presentation, we're going to be gutting the entire building and installing new base building, which includes new lobbies, mechanical, electrical, lighting. We'll also be renovating the exterior, expanding the window line, installing new windows throughout the property. In addition, we're going to be converting the first floor to parking. Shortly after submitting the SDP for the office, we will be submitting our SDP for the residential use, which is a very important piece to the mixed use because it's helping us support the economic viability of our significant investment that we're making in retenanting in the office building. We look forward to continuing to build our relationship with the city of Gaithersburg and changing the 700 Quinn's Orchard block, and thank you very much for everyone's time.
Thanks.
Thanks, Andy. I'm Mike Goodman with VICA, civil engineer on the project.
You look familiar.
Not that long ago, right? I know everyone else said it, but I just wanted to reiterate again, you know, staff has been very helpful on this project in particular. It's a complicated project and a lot of critical timelines and aspects that they've really helped us with their guidance and assistance. So I wanted to go into a little bit more detail on the processes that we've got in front of us to accomplish the site's full redevelopment. The first thing that we were looking to accomplish in tonight's application was this amendment to the original final site plan from 1972. This was an opportunity that staff helped us to determine that we could begin the construction early on this existing building by doing this amendment. Since we're only changing the building facade, reducing the square footage of the building, and repurposing the bottom floor to be able to accommodate parking, we could proceed with the amendment to the final plan. We've been concurrently working with staff on the schematic development plan for this office parcel. That's going to include the office parcel itself as well as the public roads. We're hoping to submit that shortly, and then as Andy alluded to, we're going to be following on its heels with the residential portion. And of course, we'll be finishing up with the final site plan. Hopefully, we can begin construction by the end of this year. The second item I wanted to go over in a little bit of detail is the site improvements, the site work. Really, everything that we're doing for this site is just to help accommodate the building facade and the parking garage. You can see on the east and the west side of the building, we've done some grade adjustments. The proposed ultimate grades are different than the existing grades, so we need to lower them a little bit. And of course, to do that, particularly on the east side, there was a little bit of a grading challenge where we needed to create a swale to allow the drainage to properly freely like it is today. To do that, there was 10 trees that needed to be removed. These trees are ones that would be removed in the ultimate development. And for the most part, they're smaller trees, six inches to 16 inches. One is almost 24 inches. It's a maple right here. And of course, you know, in the site plan application and the full construction, we'll have plantings associated with that to replace everything that's being removed. I think that's about it for the grading. Obviously, if you guys have questions later, you know.
I'd actually talk to staff about this, but maybe you can explain, the grading, does that allow then the openings to the lower level for access to the parking, well, eventual access to the parking? I know in the first phase, you really don't intend to use it until you create the access road, but does that effectively give you the grade to access it for construction for...
That's right. That's right. We're going to lower the grades. There's a little bit of a hill along the sides of the building, and so that's going to bring that down so that the vehicle access in the future can be accommodated.
So in the first phase, even though it won't have vehicular access, will it have, will it be creating the openings for construction and just sort of leaving them there, or is that all hidden from view? I don't really know the scope of what has to happen to convert the lower level to parking. So is it a fairly lightweight construction scope, or is it something you're going to have to...
Yeah, it is fairly, well, I don't know what, like, what I mean.
Well, okay, so in the elevations proposed, there are two big garage doors proposed, right? Those will be access to the parking areas. Does that happen in the first phase?
Yeah, those garage doors would be implemented as well.
Okay, but there will be no access to them?
Yeah, there's no pavement that would allow cars to go into it. It's really just setting things up so that the tenant can begin their own internal improvements for what they need to do.
Sure, sure. And then will it continue to be a secured garage after it's actually used, where those garage doors go away and it just isn't opening into the parking area?
So I believe it's going to be secured in the ultimate, but obviously, that's the kind of thing that, you know, will be further detailed in the SDP and the final site plan.
Well, actually, isn't this the final plan? This is amendment to final plan for this?
Yeah, and, I mean, so the garage doors will be there for this. I guess what I'm saying is that if there's a specific concern later on about gate access or hours, you know, those kinds of things, there will be another site plan that will build the...
The access drive and all.
The access drive, right.
Actually, let me be careful to phrase this right. So if we look at the elevation as part of this application, and the garage doors are going in, it's interesting to know whether there are actually real garage doors that will be functional for the life of the building even past the next phase, or if it's a temporary infill treatment because you're creating the openings now, but you're really not going to use them until the access drive is built. That's sort of the question.
I see. So I think I'm going to defer to Gary to answer that, if it's going to be the ultimate garage doors.
The garage doors, the garage doors are, right now, is just, in the future development, we will have the garage doors in place. At this point, I think we, it's better to have the garage in place for the security reason, you know.
Right. So for the record, if you could, just introduce yourself so that we can, so that we know. I know we've referred to you, we know who you are, but for the record later, that would be helpful.
Okay, my name's Gary Yuan. I'm in DVA Architects. I'm a design architect for Quinn's Orchard Project.
Okay. Okay. We can discuss, but I just want to be clear about what you were proposing at this stage. We'll get into that probably more in the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, this, the elevation shows that it's the proposed roll-up door, so, you know, I'm sure they're not going to put that door in and then remove it later. I do know that they wanted to have a secure garage for the tenant.
The other possibility, and the only reason I was asking the question, the other possibility is that for the interim period from conversion to the time you actually get the driveway in, is it could be an infill treatment of some kind that's temporary, not a garage door, but some kind of a hard surface, you know, works with the facade, whatever it is. Doesn't have to be, I'm just asking what the plan was, that's all.
I got you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the plan is right now that it will be the roll-up garage door.
The door immediately, okay. Good. That's really the answer to the question. Thank you. Okay, please continue.
All right, so that was, was there any other questions for me?
Are we, did you continue your presentation?
There is more presentation than...
Please continue, and we'll go to that.
Do you want to switch? Sorry.
Thank you, council members. I already introduced myself.
He just promoted.
Gary Yuan, with DVA Architects. You can see from this existing picture of the existing three-story building, which is built in early 1970s, and it was built to, it was a project, a boot suit project for defense contract before. That's why you look at this existing building as a feature of very massive basery and very limited windows. And also, these windows, dark bronze window with dark bronze frame, I guess at that time is probably fashion in that time. And those windows are set back like more than two feet from existing surface, exterior surface, basery. So that contribute that more massive looking, looks heavy. It's not neither standards, current standards for the office market now, so...
So you just go to...
Down, yeah. So this is the view from existing parking lot. And it does give people impression of being a bunker. I always say it's heavy. It's not, you know, invite.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just want to briefly go through the floor plan. And the existing building has two major entrances from the street. One is at the west side, a low level, and the other one is on the south side, the second floor, which you didn't show on the plan. And the two antowers of the building, this is the south one, this north one, contains the stairways and a bathroom and some utility rooms. And the north tower has a freight elevator, which we're going to keep that. And this freight elevator is accessible from the loading dock, which we're going to retain for the future development. And the whole building has three stairways and two freight elevators, I'm sorry, two passenger elevators and one freight elevator is a major vertical circulation for the whole Now I'm going to go to exterior. Let's go to the other one here. So this, this picture, a diagram, is particularly to show how we get from A to B, you know, from existing building with massive exterior, basery lot, to the way we're proposing from the rendering. You can see on this second floor demolition plan here, I'm going to do a little more detail to it because I want to, you know, have everybody clear understanding on that what we're going to do, why it doesn't meet, in existing condition doesn't meet the current requirements for the office building. You can see this hatch portion, which we're going to demolish from the existing, and the plan wise and elevation wise. From the second floor, this is second floor elevation. If you look to the left, is the section of existing. You see, on the plan, the massive pier is about 18 feet wide, so this is column base basically 30 feet. You know, the future office would be 10-foot module, so each bay probably has three offices there. Now, if you look at existing condition and the bay next to the column, we only have two feet of sliver window there, okay, which is not good for the market. And if you look at the window sill, even the middle one window, the window sill here shows almost six feet, so you even can see out from inside. So that's the existing condition there. On the third floor, which is show the hatch line here, and you see the window sill here, hatch line there. This at the four feet high, which also is not, you know, ideal for the office space. You know, you sit there, can't even see out, okay? So what we are proposing is, we're going to demo those areas and enlarge the window. You see the section here? And by doing that, actually, we can push the window out to gain more space, rentable space for the tenant. And also, we have opportunity to space our window modeling five foot on center to meet the modular 10-foot office, so I give more flexible interior layout on that. So you see, this is the proposed, so we pretty much increased more than 50% of windows for the building.
Much improved.
Yes, improved dramatically. And our goal is to make the existing, make the building look new. First of all, we're going to do high-performance painting, which is texture coated paint for entire building. You can see, like, off-white. So the first impression is like a new building. Secondly, I just did pretty much a detailed analysis to enlarge the window proportion. So the window proportion to the solid wall right now is very appropriate, and I give you a look at new building. And thirdly, we are enhancing the entrance feature. Look, we are introducing two-story high curtain wall there with metal canopy and canvas awnings. So not just that, I think, I'll show the next one. I'll show the close-up shot. So you can see, the new window framing will be light, and the glass will be a high-performance glass, low-e glass. And we also created paved plaza area, not just for the future occupants of the building to have, you know, seating area, therefore have lunch there, you know, in good weather. Also, we re-energize the surrounding, you know, community. People can use that as an amenity area also.
So you mentioned the new, I guess, the paint, a high-performance coating.
Yeah.
So it's applied directly to the existing masonry, the existing brick?
Yes, that's correct.
Because there's no new substrate, it's essentially a paint?
It's just a high-performance, yeah.
Okay. And that's okay? That's something that works with the existing wall section?
Yeah, we did multiple times, yeah. Very successfully, yeah.
Drainage and all that, it's all worked out?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just, I mean, I live right near here, and I was, I drove past it and I saw the fence around it. So does that, the front of the building going to be on the Quinn's Orchard side or the First Field side?
Is the First Field side.
Yeah, okay, so it'll stay, okay.
But this is the image you like to do. Quinn's Orchard side would have the same kind of treatment, exact treatment.
Right.
I'm going to show you that elevation.
There's also a main entry from the south side.
I'm sorry.
There's also a main entry from the south side to get into the first floor. The elevation that Gary was showing before, that's getting into the ground floor, into the parking garage level.
Yeah, I'm showing there's two elevations side by side. So one is the Quinn's Orchard side, which is this one, and the other one I already shown is from the First Field.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other... Are you done with the presentation? Make sure we don't cut you off.
Yeah.
Is that the...
I'm done.
Okay, so go ahead. I'll jump out with a question, please.
If there are any questions, yeah.
Going back to the parking situation, you've got 102 new spaces being built inside the building. You've got 400 and, I think, 12 spaces at the lot.
Right.
What's the, just out of curiosity, what's the number of employees, or is this, is this just enhancing the number, the number of spaces for what reason? Why are we building underneath? It's got 412 spaces outside already.
So the tenant does have a requirement to provide, for the applicant to provide 300 parking spaces. The surface parking is of course going to be removed for the residential development, so...
They're anticipating the future. Okay, so I wanted to...
That's right. So this is just going to be the first portion of the 300 parking spaces, and then surrounding the office building, there's going to be surface parking as well as a parking deck to accommodate the remaining parking spaces that are needed by the future tenant.
So for the first phase, they will still be parking, surface parking obviously, to allow the new employees to be able to park somewhere while constructing the new garage?
So they're not, we're not anticipating them moving in in this, in this phase.
I see.
This is just to allow for advanced construction to begin, and then allow for them to begin with their tenant improvements. We intend to fully implement the, you know, go through the SDP process, go through the site plan process, that would include, you know, the beginnings of removal of that parking, surface parking lot, and the installation of the new parking around the building.
Okay, so the cut-through right now is off of First Field Road to bring in, to go into the surface parking lot.
There's access on both Quinn's Orchard and on First Field.
Right, right. I'm focusing on First Field right now, because First Field, that entrance is not really owned by the owner, that entranceway, that cut-through, that's for the tenant next door, isn't it? I mean, the owner of the lot next door.
You talked about this entrance right here.
I'll put it there, let me see what that is.
The...
Yeah, that went up, yeah, that's it.
The property manager does, they own that, the grass that you see, the surface parking lot, as well as this building.
Right.
It's all one ownership.
Right, so that entranceway is for, is owned by the other, the owner?
No. It's owned by this owner.
Okay, okay.
That's right.
There's also a curb cut down on the bottom of that photo, and that's part of the property flat out, even though they own both adjacent properties.
There's nothing.
Okay, that was my concern, I didn't realize it was a curb cut.
Yeah, I think it is. So, okay. Just so I'm clear, it took me a little bit of flying around on Google Earth to actually figure out what we think we're pointing here. The garage entrances that we're talking about actually face Quinn's Orchard Road.
That's correct.
So when we're talking about a future parking structure, we're talking about a future parking structure along Quinn's Orchard Road?
That's correct.
In that, you know, I don't know, 100 feet of...
It's probably not going to be the full length of the building to get to the 300 parking spaces.
You can see in one of their elevations, they kind of indicate a...
This dash line there?
This dash line of that line with the parking garage is going to be...
So it's going to be a two-level?
There'll be a level, the same as the first floor, and then a level that's the same as where this new vehicle parking is in the bottom floor.
Okay. I guess we'll see that, that Phase 2 plan, exactly how the access drives work, how the garage will marry up to the building and access to those garage doors will work. That's coming later.
As well as the streets to, the new public streets to service.
Okay.
I mean, the one thing this property has, if there is one thing this property has going for it right this minute, it's that the trees screen the... it's that the trees screen the building from anybody driving by on Quince Orchard Road.
Yeah.
But those are also the trees we're gonna take out to put in the parking garage, access to the parking garage. So my only real concern about this whole thing is sort of a larger one of the front of this building is facing inwards, and I think as part of the larger site development, we need to make sure that whatever faces Quince Orchard Road has an equal level of architecture and treatment as the inward-facing, 'cause there, there are, there is not a back to this building anymore.
Well, I think, you know, my comments were geared in that same direction. You know, we're, the street hierarchy right now is prioritizing the inside and it's treating Quince Orchard as your C or service, um, area. Well, I think that the way that you're initially approaching it as, um, loading from, um, the south side, it's more the way that I would envision, um, a street hierarchy around this space in order to reconcile the facade that you're going to impose on the people who see this building from Quince Orchard. I, I know that it's a chicken and egg type of cer- situation, but I just, I feel like I need more information in terms of what's happening around in order to, um, to understand this side, this final site plan. Um, how it connects to, um, what, how, how does it permeate to the new design? How does it engage with this parking structure and the la- um, the lateral sides, um?
Well, the, the one thing is that the, the front is, will be facing the closest residents. And that's, that's, I think, very key in, in how we, the staff has worked with the applicant.
And I agree with you, I think that that's our A, um, quality, um, facade. But I think that we're all, we're giving the C to the Quince Orchard area while, while, which is a prominent, important view, um, to how you approach the site, even from the standpoint of, um, visibility for the remaining of the, of your development. To have that, um, facade be a service-oriented facade, I think it's...
Well, the only, the only, it's gonna have the same facade that it has in the front, except for the front door, because it's gonna have the parking garage at that level. You have to look at how the, the grades and, um...
But then we're talking about a parking garage that is not shown here, neither on the elevations or in the, um, floor, in the, um, floor plan.
Yeah.
And I have a, I have a hard time just moving forward with the assumption that there's going to be that a future garage access and how that's going to impact the street.
I guess I, I agree with all the comments. I don't have a problem moving forward with this. I think the caveat to that needs to be, when we come back with the garage, there is a very high expectation that however we deal with it, enassing and materials, whatever, that... 'Cause everything above the garage level, the facade of the building is fine.
It's the same.
So you've got depth there, you've got some existing utility lines that are gonna, assuming you're not moving or undergrounding them, we're gonna limit how close to the street you can come anyway. So I think we need to look, the expectation is you look at some creative ways, whether the garage covers the whole ground floor and you look at some berming and some landscaping or some facade treatment. I mean, there's a lot of things you could do so that this doesn't look like the C or D facade.
Let's frame this up, we're, we're really in the question point here, we haven't gotten to the recommendation yet. Um, I do wanna turn a couple of your, you guys' comments into questions, and one is, you've shown it out along with the potential extent of the garage as an elevation, what is it in plan? Do you have that dotted in? Just to give us a sense of what, what's available for, whether it's landscaping or grading or something.
It's, uh...
It doesn't show the, um, the outline of the garage.
And you might have to just take your cursor and, and kind of approximate it, but...
The, I guess, does it go to the sidewalk?
The floor plane.
Does it?
No, right now it's a berm.
Thirty foot, I'm looking at it, we got a thirty foot right away.
So it has to go to that?
Maybe you all could pull up the plan and just demonstrate what the extent and plan is likely to be.
So, so immediately adjacent to the building, there's a, there's that rectangle there. That's a, a ramp that's, that's going down.
There's the ramp going down.
And then next to that is going to be the, uh, it's a, a double-loaded, uh...
Okay, can you put that in context with the site, though? 'Cause I think the big question is how far back from the road, the right-of-way is that? And, and again, you could put the site plan up and just sort of approximate it based on your understanding of the depth of the... 'Cause obviously it's not designed yet, it's not really, it's not a thing yet.
It's, it's, it's about, about twenty feet away from the back of the sidewalk. The, the, the face of the, the new parking...
The property line.
Deck, right.
Yeah. It's much further from the sidewalk.
Twenty feet, it's a thirty foot right away.
It's twenty feet from, they're twenty feet from property line. And the sidewalk is, is, uh, further out.
Okay, so limit on that a little bit, get, get closer to the...
We do have to note that this is a plan that you're looking at, it's from nineteen seventy-two and the road was wide, so...
That is true.
Okay, well, do we have a site plan that shows the current road, section, road?
If, if you look at Exhibit Three, it shows the, the roadway.
Right, so it, it, it extends right, you know, about to this area.
Yeah.
And, and here, can you see the, the cursor that I'm showing?
Yep.
Which is about twenty feet away from, from the property line. Which is even then, you know, the, the sidewalk and the road is, is probably another twenty feet away from, from that.
So we get a general sense that there is some space there to reconcile this.
And just, just so, you know, we, we understand the grade here, you know, as we're looking at the site plan on the left side, the grade is at the first floor elevation.
Right.
And then it, it drops off.
It's a dramatic slope when you head towards there.
Right, so that parking garage is, you know, it's, it's gonna look like one-story if I'm driving north on, it, it, you know, you won't even see it, it'll be at grade as you're driving north on Quince Orchard.
Yeah.
And then as you're coming, uh, south on Quince Orchard, that's where you'll see the one level of, of parking.
And that's why I asked my question, 'cause I drove around the whole site a couple of times today like a nut. But I did, just 'cause I was trying to understand how it was gonna look, trying to envision the changes. Because I looked at this and I went, wow. I mean, 'cause I think the, your changes are very dramatic, but I was gonna, I was trying to envision it in the existing building.
Right.
So, and but, and that, I'm comfortable with it, I, I really am, based on, you know, my driving around.
Okay, let's, let's keep it to questions and then, and then we'll get to discussion. Any other questions? I think you guys were heading in our direction with some of that, wh- what is the impact of the ultimate build-out? And what else were you concerned about, maybe you could get a little more, um, information about that?
I just, um, it was regarding, um, the hierarchy and how, um, it is approached, what is the, um, the ultimate build-out? Um, because we, whatever we approve right now builds on whatever, uh, on the next aspect and we don't have the fa- the feasibility to go back. And, um, I just, my concern is, is there, have there been any consideration of allocating that, um, garage in any other location than the frontage?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, we, we did our best to design it in a way that it wasn't gonna be, um, you know, large. And we certainly anticipate that it needs to, to, the, the fronts on Quince Orchard, that it needs to, to look not like a, a, a parking deck.
Yeah, but to cut to the chase, why wouldn't it have been on the other side?
Or on the, or on the south side, or on the north side.
Yeah, so, I mean, on the north side is, so it's an obviously existing building. On the north side, there's the existing loading dock. On the south side is the main entry, the first floor of the building today. And then on, on the other side...
And the road, and the road that's on that, that's been approved as part of the schedule plan.
I'm only just asking, I think, the, just flip it, if you merge it on the side, why not?
So then on, on the, on the, on the west side, that's where there's the, the proposed public road that, that'll be there. And there's not enough room between the existing building and the proposed public road. And then on top of that, of course, we were trying to be aware of the, the residential that'll be on that side of the, the development as well. So it seemed to, to speak itself that it would go on the, the, um, the more major road, the east side, where it's not gonna impact the residence, it doesn't impact the, the existing loading or the existing entry. And we could also use the existing grades to our benefit to help, you know, shield it.
Listen, I, I look at it and it makes sense, because it's free, it's free-developable area that you're not going to use towards the residential. However, it still has an impact in the way that we experience that street, um, and that, and it will also dictate the way that it develops, um, in terms of, um, uses and, um, and just by creating, by a vision of fronting a garage to this street, it gives it a different type of, um, priority. It sort of lowers the standards for what could come, um, next, because we have already enabled, um, a parking garage. And, you know, I, I'm sure that we can dress that up and, like, you know, and make it look nice with a bunch of trees, but at the same time, we're still having a garage fronting what I believe it's still your B street.
Although, I have to say, for the moment, and this is a little bit of a, oh, be careful, I don't wanna undermine what you're saying, 'cause I, I hear your concern. We're looking at an, an amendment to final plan tonight that doesn't yet commit us to approving all of these things we're talking about.
I agree.
So I think we have to also take it on face value, that what's being proposed, now we can talk about the access and things like that, but that's, one thing I wanna be careful of is that we can't, um, necessarily assume that all this is gonna happen anyway.
I, I totally understand, um, that, I, but it's still, it's a great, it's the biggest assumption of the plan that that would happen.
Mm-hmm. John, did you wanna...
Yeah, if I could just interject, because this is a really unique situation. And this building, seven hundred Quince Orchard Road, um, for many years, we've regarded as obsolete. And it is, I mean, I know this really isn't within your purview about, you know, who's going in there and what, whatever, but this is, um, you know, a real, true success story for the city, that, that this developer has come with a, with a really wonderful tenant that is gonna occupy the top two floors and the conversion of the ground floor to parking to allow for, you know... And, um, you know, the economics of the situation, again, not your purview, but, um, is that they needed to sell off the surface parking in order to, um, develop, to develop townhouses to support the redevelopment of this office building. So I just wanted to just put that out there, because it is...
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for the applicant's team? We can get into more questions as we get into discussion. Any other question? Is there anyone here that's not part of the applicant's team that was going to, uh, comment on this application? Okay, so seeing no one, Jasmine, what's your recommendation, please?
So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report, findings and recommendation, Grant A F P dash seven eight six four dash thousand and eighteen Amendment to Final Site Plan, fighting in compliance with Sections twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the City Code with two conditions.
Very good, thank you. Any questions on the recommendation?
No.
All right, let's, let's open up our discussion then, and let's pick up where, um, we left off, I think either between Ruth Ali and Phil. The elevation that faces Quince Orchard, um, and Jasmine, if you'd please just, just put that up. I don't, I don't mind not having my face on while I'm talking. Um, yeah, there, there are so many more things that look, look better up there. Uh, con- so, so in terms of the context and, and what, what our, um, scorecard is, I think the first thing I, I wanna open with is, what a remarkable transformation to, uh, an, an old and at one time probably state-of-the-art building that, that found its way to becoming obsolete over the course of forty years or whatever it was. And, and, and so what a wonderful opportunity then to, to bring this back without having to tear it down, without having to think about a, a much more aggressive, um, impact to the environment or to the, to the landfill and everything else. So, uh, I mean, loud applause for that, I think this, this is just a beautiful approach. So I wanna focus then on, um, the, the critique of, of this amendment to the plan, which is these elevations and, and the access to what will ultimately become some underground parking, but with access unresolved at this point. Where, where, where should we discuss this? Do you, do you all feel comfortable with the idea that ultimately there will be access drives to the, the underground parking that will like, that will happen on the Quince Orchard side? The proposal we heard tonight was for a parking deck to be included with that, although that hasn't been fully worked out yet, nor is it, is it designed, so we can't really necessarily comment on that. Um, are you comfortable with the proposed building, um, changes? Is there any, anything about this we should be...
I have, I have no issue with the proposed building changes. My hesitancy is the what-if of the next phases. Because we're not reviewing that, because they're not part of this application, and there's no guarantee that they will or will not happen, other than everybody fairly confident they will. But if this goes forward and for some reason the parking garage doesn't, we're left with an unknown temporary condition with a bunch of trees taken down and a dirt road?
I don't know about a dirt road.
Or a dirt, dirt construction access to the doors?
I don't, I don't think that would be the case.
I mean, we, I mean, they will have to stabilize the, you know, any of the disturbed areas as part of it. And of course, it'll be bonded and, and everything with the, with the city to get those permits.
But I don't think the proposed...
So they'll, they'll plant grass back there at some point? But we'd be left with a facade in a condition that's less than desirable. Obviously, if the garage goes forward and everything is designed well, I have zero concerns. But my hesitancy is sort of the, the half, half-pregnant nature of this thing.
Fair enough. What is the plan for, um, street trees in the right-of-way? Uh, any, any enhancements there, either from the city or from the applicant as part of the, part of the development of this overall site plan?
Um, are you talking about on Quince Orchard? Um, uh, so there is a, a public utility easement and there's overhead lines that are in that area. But, you know, there is gonna be room for planting areas between that P U weed and the deck as, as well as, you know, the possibility of putting in trees along Quince Orchard. I mean, that's, I think that's becomes the state purview to some degree, but, um, there is room between the existing utilities and the, the future...
But in this phase, there wouldn't be any proposed landscaping that would have to come with the second phase? Or would, would it come, could it come with this phase?
Well, I mean, we didn't include any landscaping with the expectation that, you know, there is gonna be heavy construction in this area and any trees that we put in would be, you know, um, you know, it would be small trees and, and they really would be stunted over the construction period.
So maybe what this might look like is, um, some sort of a window for that to happen. So in other words, if, you know, the building gets done, tenant's happy, but the parking isn't necessary, economics term, such that the rest of the site isn't developed as quickly as we imagined, maybe then a landscaping plan does kick in to help finish off the Quince Orchard-facing side of this project. Does that, does that make sense?
That's, that's the direction I was sort of going with.
Does that make sense? I mean, I don't know what that would look like, that's something staff and you could work out, but conceptually, we know that it'll be stabilized in probably some, some, you know, hydroseed and a little bit of turf for, for a year or two. But if that had to live past some term and we could discuss what that is, then really a landscaping plan should be kicked, should kick in, I think, if, you know, circumstances...
So that's fine, I mean, essentially, we would have a backup plan, where we'd have a landscape plan, we'd submit to staff as part of the signature process and that would be...
Okay, so that's kind of on the table for, for proposal now. Any, what else do we need to talk about? Well, going along with that, is there, we wanna plug in a schedule of some sort. In other words, this may go on for three years, it may go on for a year.
Yeah, I would propose a term of some kind. I don't know what it would be, but that's, we could, we could work that out, I think, yeah.
Can, can you explain kind of the schedule that you're proposing right now? Maybe that would help them, uh, with some of the...
Oh, it doesn't matter, it could be an eight-month schedule, it could be... My, my point is that there's, there's economic factors in play.
Absolutely.
They're great right now. They may not be in two years. So I'm just, the, the, the idea of a backup plan is really what we're talking about. I, I'm sure this will move in all...
Well, I, I just wanted to have them talk about the time schedule of submitting an SDP and, and, and how they're planning to do that.
That's fair, if they wanna go on the record of that tonight, that's fine, I didn't wanna necessarily put them on the spot, but that's, that's fine. It's your call.
Trudy doesn't mind, right? Uh, so, I, I mean, we are, we have been working very closely with staff on SDP and, and, you know, we would expect to be submitting that SDP this month to begin the, the formal review with staff. So, you know, our expectation is that we would get the SDP through, we would go straight to final site plan. The, the applicant's obligation to the tenant is that they need to have the building ready for them, you know, middle of next year, which means we really need to have construction going by the end of this year, which means all this is gonna happen very quickly.
And that's on all phases, including the parking garage and the streets.
That's, that's the, 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 you know, the obligation between the applicant and the tenant, though. I mean, obviously, that doesn't involve the city.
Right. It's, it's, it's good to know that it's moving fast. I, I think, um, we all, we've all seen SDPs get stalled for one reason or other, whether it's, well, who knows, right? It could be anything. But most especially economic conditions. So I, I think, I think the proposal on the table is to have a backup landscape... So I think the proposal on the table is to have a backup landscape plan to finish that area if it doesn't go forward within some reasonable amount of time, whatever that is. Maybe not as fast as you're proposing, but something that's, you know, helps back up at the--
Two years, three years, something in that.
Something like that. Do we want to put that in as a condition? I think I'm proposing that, and I'm kind of turning to staff and applicant to, you know, what's a reasonable term, you know, I don't necessarily want to hem you in to say you're going to get it done in 18 months, but on the other hand, five years is probably too long, so--
I would say three years, because that's how long the site plan could stand.
I think that's fine.
Is a three-year term to get on the other phase reasonable? How does that sound to you guys? Fair condition. Okay. What else, what else do you want to, Ruth Sally, I apologize, I know you hit a couple of points, and I'm losing track of which we've covered and have, if we've covered everything.
I mean, I think at this time, our focus is, it's what's in front of us. You know, we have the phases ahead, and the devil is in the details. I think that it was, it's going to be a matter of, you know, staying very close to details and how everything is executed to address this street. And frankly, that's the only option that I see possible, without seeing the remaining plan around it and seeing what other potentials for garage, or maybe turning this into a slip lane in front of it, or so, it's sort of a vacuum. So I have to assume that you've taken some, made some considerations into looking at your context, and we'll just have to watch the details.
Mm-hmm. I'd make one recommendation, and that would be, again, because of the public-facing nature of this, is to come up with temporary infill for the two garage doors. Until you end up with a garage and a working, whatever your working mechanism's going to be for controlling access, just hard to know, right, because we haven't seen it, only because I think for a year or two, or whatever period of time this is open, before you get to that next phase, it's just an odd-looking thing to have two garage doors that go nowhere. It's almost, it almost screams, this is the back of the building, you know?
I'll suggest something a little simpler, that the garage doors be painted to match the building.
It may be that simple.
So they're not black garage doors and a white facade.
It may be that simple, but make it blend, you know, come up with a strategy, and I know it can be a temporary partition type that's worth very little and can be pulled out, you know, as soon as it's time to put the real doors in and work out how the access goes. And from the street, it'll just blend with the rest of the facade and be, you know, insignificant. It won't call attention to itself. Make sense?
Yeah.
If you want to paint, painting the doors, all that staff and you work, this is not going to be something that comes back to us. This is going to go over to staff. If painting the doors is the right way to go, we can make that call. But we have in the past seen the garage doors move towards a more transparent kind of quality, whether they're mesh or they're a simpler gated style because of security. You don't want to have a completely closed-off, some visibility--
What are we proposing that, actually, for the ventilation reason?
Exactly. ventilation in view, and concern, so that obviously you'll want to have that until it's actually in service and integrated with the rest of the garage. So some kind of temporary infill, I think, makes more sense on that side. The last, I actually had more questions. This totally takes us off that discussion, but I'm assuming new rooftop equipment's happening, and you've got a whole new screen happening up there, is that right? Or is there something already there that's going to be adequate for what you're doing?
We are not changing the penthouse, the envelope of the penthouse.
But you have more area covered by a screen, right? For rooftop, no? You don't?
Because everything's--
Everything exists.
Great, just getting painted.
And you're fitting all your new mechanical equipment within that same footprint?
I see nods from lots of expert-looking people out there.
Yeah, I mean, they are looking at creating some tenant space at that top level as well as part of the SDP.
Different problem.
And that's not something that we can bring to you tonight, because that actually raises the height of the building, and that's got to go through that.
One of the details I want to hit, do you, it is probably will come back later, but are you going to sign the building, or do a new monument on the street entrance, or do you know how that, what that strategy's going to be?
We know that they'll be signed.
On the building?
Yeah.
Okay.
We know that they'll be signed.
Just curious, it'll come back later, but just curious what the strategy was for that.
They are going to submit a design guidelines with the SDP.
Okay. And follow that, just go along with it. Excellent.
I just want to go on record that in previous phases of this application, I called this the pig that you were going to put lipstick on, and I think you did a really good job.
Thank you.
Maybe it's better than lipstick, maybe?
It is. I think it's fantastic.
Lipstick in a new dress.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think that analysis, the windows, I have to say, was really very well done. All right. Squeeze more glossary, and that was, I think, very well done.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, I drove around the building a couple times, and then I made, because I looked at, you know, the plan, and I was like, how are they going to transform this? But it looks--
And then security chase job?
Yeah.
You've got to stop doing that.
There's a fence around it now.
Way to name tag.
But I think you all have done a fantastic job. I mean, really, just sort of out-of-the-box thinking on this thing. Really, I'm very impressed.
Sparking homework.
Excellent. Any other concerns we need to mention or discuss? Okay. So Jasmine, help me recap. We've got an additional condition for the--
The landscape?
Landscape backup plan within three years.
And then the temporary infill for the garage doors.
Okay. So do you want to read a little something that we can use?
Um--
Oh, Greg's got it.
Just have landscaping plan for review approval. The final site plan is not approved within three years.
To be implemented within three years, should the--
Nothing about the garage door, right?
Rest of the park.
Next, next. What is it?
What Greg said, except that the landscape plan to be implemented within three years should the rest of the site not be developed.
Okay. Are you guys, applicant's team, good with that, that term? Okay. And then there's another one about the garage doors, right? We'll do that as a fourth.
The applicant shall work with staff to create garage doors that blend with the building.
Or temporary.
Temporary.
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody good? Any questions about what we're proposing? We're just, we've got to find something, right? Beautiful job. All right. Any other concerns, questions?
Nope.
Okay. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report findings and recommendation, I move that we grant AFP-7864-2018 Amendment to the Final Site Plan, finding in compliance with Sections 24-170 and 24-172A of the City Code, with the four conditions as written to the record.
Second.
Move in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks very much. Nice work. Excellent work.
Thank you.
Glad, I'm glad to see it all the way you need it to. You and your pigs of lipstick. Do they fly also?
We'll see.
Okay. That takes us to, from the commission, Lloyd, may I start with you, please?
Oh, okay.
I can start down here, and you can think about it if you like.
No, actually, no, I just, I was looking from the staff, and that's true. Okay. No, I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay. Danny, anything?
Okay, yes, I have something. This whole NPCA thing has really gotten me in a little, where's Jasmine? Where's Jasmine? I've been asked by my alma mater, Morgan State University, to be a part of Planning Advisory Committee, and that's because someone who knows that I'm on the NPCA had recommended me. So I met Dr. Campo, Dr. Saunders, Dr. Sen, and Dr. Shin, and they were effusive with admiration for Jasmine.
All right.
Oh, my goodness, they just went on and on about Jasmine, and I was just so proud that it's my alma mater and that Jasmine here, because I told them I was, you know, planning commission in the city of Gaithersburg, so Jasmine, you are just blazing trails, so kudos to you.
And I'm sure, no fault, I mean, Jasmine, nice going, right? But I'm sure all of our staff would get that effusive.
Yeah.
Respect of all alamotters.
Especially if they went to Morgan State.
That's great.
Yeah.
So what are you planning?
Well, let's see, it's to help with some individuals in the graduate program and to evaluate some of their plans and their capstone projects.
In the planning, the urban planning?
It's, yes, the, you know, it's not just urban planning, but it is just the planning, the school of architecture and planning.
Oh, wow. Nice.
So I was very excited about that.
Well, listen, encourage them to come hang out here for a while.
I am going to do that.
Okay, great. Nice. Ruth Sally? Can you top that?
I just want to remind everyone that the Kentland School of Foundation will be hosting a town hall on May 30th, to basically go through the findings that a strategic vision for the Kentland Main Street has yielded, and so we're looking for input, we're looking to basically generate some excitement, because the recommendations have been very great, very good, and I've had the opportunity to review them. And if you miss that opportunity, we'll also be before Mayor and City Council on June 4th with abbreviated version of our presentation.
Excellent. Bill?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Oh, I did, I saw you two delightful little girls, and they had this little, you know, library. I'm going to come and rent a book from there, like, borrow a book from the library.
Do you have a little free library at your house?
Yep.
Nice, nice, nice. Okay, so staff, who wants to jump in?
You want to start?
Greg. We'll start with what's on the agenda first.
In your package tonight's meeting was a memo to staff requesting on the commission delegated authority for a minor amendment to the final site plan. Just a little background, staff has been meeting with the owners of 704 Quin's Orchard Road, right next door to the 700 Quin's Orchard, and they're proposing new some improvements to the building and the site. One of those improvements includes increasing the existing vestibule for the office building by approximately 194 square feet. As we've done in the past, similar projects, staff has requested the planning commission finds proposed application of a minor effect, and then the commission's direct staff to handle it as a minor site plan amendment, staff level. We're asking the same request tonight of the commission, and if you have any questions about what's being proposed, changed, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I'd just like to see it. If you could circulate the proposal or just show it.
It's in the--
It was in the packet.
But I have it on my screen, too.
You don't mind, put it up real quick.
So the existing conditions here, and what they're doing is they're essentially just taking this voided space here, it's outdoors, and bumping it out.
Yes, sorry.
And then they're just creating a new entrance way with that as well.
Six hundred pages of engineering.
I literally missed the address. I just, pictures are worth more to me, obviously, than words.
Any concerns for delegating this? Okay. What do you need, a motion or just a nod?
I think just, you're okay.
We're okay. You're okay? You're okay?
Good sense.
The other thing, as you were aware, staff is currently conducting a survey on the C D zone. The survey went live yesterday. We want to get the word out about it. The purpose of the survey is to collect information on the effectiveness of the zone and determine whether or not it adequately services the Frederick Avenue corridor. So real quick, I just kind of wanted to walk everyone through, for everyone watching, for the commission, how to get to the survey. So from our city's website, it is a nice big button right there.
Congratulations.
Yep. And from there, it will take you to the page. The page offers a lot of information, background information on the corridor, glossary of terms used, so if you don't speak planner, you know, what's being asked in the survey, as well as frequently asked questions. And then to take the survey, you just click the big button again, top of the right corner, says begin survey, and it will take you to the page.
Excellent.
And stick with it.
Yeah.
Because it does, it does go into detail, and I think people who, like I said, don't speak planning are going, may have a difficult time plowing through some of that.
Yeah.
But I think it's an effective and a very good survey, and I look forward to seeing the results on that.
And the last thing on that is the timing of the survey, it is up to this month only, so it needs to be taken before the end of the month.
Okay.
Just to add to that, though, 2,900, over 2,900 postcards were sent out to property owners along the Frederick Avenue corridor to give them attention to the survey, and also there are email blasts that have gone out to all of the city committees, commissions, et cetera, and there was a press release that went out today. So we're really trying to get attention, and by, like, 3 o'clock today, there were at least 16, right? Respondents.
And we'll also be utilizing social media to promote the survey.
Great. Okay. So we'll all repost too, right? Danny, you have a lot of followers on Facebook. You can easily--
I do. I'm a regular.
Thanks, Greg. All right.
At your seat, or at the Diaz's, is a fresh-off-the-press best practices for drive-through lanes that was put together by Alyssa Rolfe and our long-range planning team. What she looked at were recent developments. We didn't want to go back to the 90s or the 80s. Many of the samples are from Canada, and we just have this for you to read, and if you'd like to discuss it at our next meeting, we can put it on the agenda.
Oh, we got homework.
That's right.
I think, but put it in context, Trudy, and I'll paraphrase, and please jump in and correct me, but we have an application that's been contemplating this, and I think there's been some discussion that's gone in different directions about what's right and what's not. This is an attempt to begin to get a point of view from the city on what we should consider appropriate or not, and this gives us a little bit of, sort of unbiased, an unbiased analysis of what's out there, what might be appropriate. Is that fair?
That is correct.
And the city hasn't actually approved the drive-through, what, in 20 years, I believe, somebody said? Somebody said at the last meeting, it's been years and years since--
I'm not sure that's accurate, but--
Okay. Other than a bank, and that's the other thing, we did want to make a distinction.
We did at Kentucky Fried Chicken, we did--
The pharmacy.
Pharmacy. We've done a number of drive-throughs.
I think the point is just to get our own policy-level framework in place, and this is a good start for whether or not it turns into a recommendation from us to do something, or it just becomes a more informal guideline, we can decide that, I think, along the way. Great start. Thank you for doing that.
With that, I'll turn it to John. And then I'll come back to me.
Speaking of drive-throughs, as you know, the Saw pad sites are still, is still an active application. Your record is open, as is the council's. There was a work session tentatively scheduled for May 14th. Saw is not interested in having that work session, however, they are working on alternative plans, and they do intend to submit an alternative plan next week. This is all, again, tentative, but we had a meeting with them today, and their intention is to go before you for your review on June 6th, two meetings from now, and then have policy discussion at the mayor and council on July 2nd. So that is in the process at this point.
So right now, you're proposing a process where there'd be no joint hearing or work session, you would just take it individually and make a recommendation?
That's correct. The joint hearing goes back to the one, and I think it was in October. So, you know--
So the May 14th day is no longer--
Yes.
It's a free night.
May 14th is no longer a joint work session, so it's a free night. Yes. May 14th is no longer a joint work session, so it's a free night.
So we would see it and make a recommendation that same night, or would we have?
On June 6th, yes. I mean, you'd get it, you know, in your package.
Right, right.
The Friday before.
Good. All right.
Okay. And the other, only other thing I had was, there were a bunch of us who attended the American Planning Association Conference in New Orleans, May, or April 21st to April 24th, including Commissioner Wessel. It was, I attended, as well as Rob Robinson, Alyssa Ruff, and Ray Rokes, who's in the audience. I think it was, for me, it was a particularly forward-thinking conference, and it got me thinking about a lot of exciting things like changing community engagement, and our, our whole CD Zone approach is an example of that. Impact of millennials on our markets and planning.
Overrated.
And, and new technologies. I mean, there must have been 50 sessions on autonomous cars. It's crazy. Autonomous cars, drones, and artificial intelligence. Very forward-thinking, very interesting. And I think all of us who attended got pretty excited about, you know, new ideas and new technologies and new ways to look at things. And hopefully that will transpire to great things in Gaithersburg, so.
I think the one takeaway for me from a number of the sessions I attended was how actually far ahead of the curve we are as a city compared to a lot of municipalities on everything from, believe it or not, affordable housing to design standards for signage, to all sorts of issues where I was going expecting to find really great insight to bring back. And the insight I got was, well, we already do this. So that was good to, it was a good reference point.
I got the same thing when I went to, when I was in Phoenix. I just said, I got the same feeling. I said, we're doing a lot of good things here.
Yep.
Yeah. Is this your, was this your first one?
Yep.
Okay. What did you think? I mean, it's a lot of stuff going on there.
It was a really useful conference. It was a good...
Did you do some of the mobile tours?
Yep. Yeah, it was nice to sort of get out and see some examples in the city of everything from planning to historic preservation.
Good.
It was definitely worthwhile.
Great. All right.
Ruth Sally, have you ever done that?
No, my brother keeps graduating and then changing his dates. Truly.
Once you get a chance to do it, it's going to be really nice.
That's funny. All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Thanks, John. Phil?
Our next meeting is May the 16th, and then, as John mentioned, we have one on June the 6th.
Excellent.
Frank?
I was just sitting here speculating, and I'm pretty sure that the folks at University of Maryland where I went have all, pretty sure, forgotten that I was ever there.
That's great. That's great.
And that's actually not necessarily a bad thing. Activities of the time.
God, I knew there was a reason we invited you. Nice. Well, with that, if there's nothing else from staff or anyone else, have a good evening. We're adjourned.